I'd call a meeting to order, the Jackson County Commissioned Work Session, April 16th, 2018. We'll begin by talking the road. Ms. Mann?
District one, Mr. Guthrie.
President.
District two, Mr. Benson.
President.
District three, Ms. Gilbert. District four, Mr. Seuss.
President.
Chairman, President.
Thank you, Ms. Mann. Next we have invocation. Mr. Jeff Arnold, would you please?
I just pray. My gracious heaven and Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. Once again, Lord, we thank you for all your blessings. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful county that we live in. Lord, we thank you for our elected leaders. And we just pray that you just be within, Lord, give them guidance in everything they do and all the decisions they make. Lord, we just pray that everything we do, we bring honor and glory to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We will, Mr. Benble, again, some praise to the nations.
Praise to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First we have to approve the agenda of the nights made on April 16th, 2018. I would like to make one change. Number five, a discussion of revenue commissioner need to move back up to number one. Mr. Arnold has somewhere he needs to be. That would be the only change that I have.
I'll make the most of the change.
We have motion, we have second. Have motion and second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Next we have public comments from citizens. We have on the list today, Mr. Gary Morgan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Just very quick, this coming trade day on weekend, which is May the 5th, 6th and 7th, it's a responsible speech first Monday weekend. So if some of y'all running for political office, if you'd like to come up here and basically allotted time from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock, goes longer, that's fine. Fifteen minute stump speeches for politicians, also citizens. If they have anything to say, you know, no threats. That's one thing I did put on the first Monday site, no threats. But you're welcome to say whatever you want to say right here at the gazebo. Fifteen minute speeches, 1:00 to 3:00 on Saturday, May the 5th. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Next we have discussion on the commission. We will step up to number five. As to discuss the revenue commissioner concerning a mapping clerk one position. Lord, Mr. Arnold.
I appreciate your letting me. I just had another engagement I get to. I discussed it, I think, with a few of you, maybe all of you prior, but the former revenue commissioner, Mr. Crawford, before he, his term ended, Bill Knight retired. So when Bill Knight retired, we, we signed a contract with him and he was contracted to work for so many years. Well, that, that time ended October 1st. But we budgeted for the next year because we didn't know, you know, we just didn't know if it was going to work another year or not. But he left us, so I've still got this bunny budget, is what I'm saying, for the next year. And what I'd like to do, I've got, I've got some personnel, I've got a particular person that's close to retirement, that's actually past their years, I mean, they can retire anytime. And they're going to retire soon. It may not be this year, but it's going to be soon, maybe this year, next year. And what I'd like to do is go ahead and hire a mapping clerk and bring them in and let them start training under this mapper until, until that time when they retire.
But you, you don't think it'll be any increase in your budget?
No, it actually be, it'll actually, it's actually less than what I had budgeted for him. I, I didn't, like, like I said, he was on a contract, so a retired state employee on the retirement system can still make, you remember, 25,000 or something?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand. So we had budgeted that full amount, you know, because it's a pro rated share anyway, so it really didn't cost the county that much money. But we budgeted that whole amount because we didn't know how much time he would work. Turns out he didn't work any, he left us October 1st and took another job. So, so we haven't actually paid him from October 1st until today. So there's a lot of the money anyway that, you know, so, yeah, we're going to be way over still. Our budget's still going to be a lot less if we hire this person. The only difference is next year, that won't drop off, you know, we'll still have that budget for a year or so until that, until she retires.
It wouldn't be an increase.
No, it wouldn't be an increase. No, no. Won't be no increase. In other words, the money's already there, I'm just asking.
Basically, what you want is just to get somebody trained.
Right.
Before this other one wants to retire.
Give them a couple of years, year and a half, whatever it's going to turn out to be, under their belt, before the other one retires.
They go, at that time, maybe go from a clerk to a mapper.
Yeah, yeah. I want to hire a mapping clerk, so that's, can I, I don't know if I'm supposed to talk money or not, but I think that's.
It's clerk one.
Clerk one, yeah, position. So when that person in that year and a half or whatever would be promoted, if they're the right person, I mean, I don't, I'm not just going to promote somebody to cause, but if it turns out they work out and they're the right person, then we promote them from a clerk to a mapper. That's right.
Is there any other discussion concerning this item? Well, if there's no objections, I'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Arnold.
Thank you. I'll miss you.
Next we have is Carl Barnes, who wants to discuss speed reduction devices for the county park.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the situation we have down there. Since the first year, we've had four accidents down there, three of them tow vehicles. One broke up, telephone pole, one tib on the tree doing that 60 mile an hour, and the other tore down a fence, wooden fence. So within the last four months, we've had four accidents down there. Most have been teenagers, but it ain't only teenagers that, that speeds through there. It's old, elderly people, old people, you know, it's everybody. I, I don't know what to, what we need to do about it, but there's got to be something done because if that little girl had hit somebody coming out of the campground that day, then she would have tib on downs to that tree, about 100 yards down the road.
Oh, it would have been two vehicle accident.
Yeah. And last year, right before winter time, there was a lady got hit head on, out there past the office, and she had two kids in the back. So, you know, there've been some serious accidents there in the past.
What are you proposing? Are you looking at those strips to slow the traffic down?
Just Benble mentioned them, bubble strips.
Rumble strips.
Rumble strips, bubble strips.
Nothing left or camp. I don't know more than what the big mess to put over there than any of those.
We can take a look, take a look at the situation where the accidents occurred.
Can you put a counter out there using the speed ISO?
We can, yes, we can. Speed on top and the number of vehicles.
Where are you suggesting to put them at? What?
I would like to put at least one on each side of each of the kiddie park. Okay? And then one, as you're coming out of the campground, out of the campground.
And that curve.
It's kind of a blind, blind spot there. And when people come to pull over that hill, then they can't see who's pulling out of the campground. Put something there.
You have some traffic calming devices installed, ma'am.
There's some speed humps in there, yes.
Is it all in the lower end?
Yes, all the way towards the rest.
Does any of the accidents occur in the lower end?
No.
All the accidents have been from the camper's entrance to the, to the park entrance, right to the office.
Is there a payment?
Twenty.
Is it enforced?
Fifteen there at the kiddie park.
Is it ever enforced?
I, I'm not.
We're not getting much.
I can, I can enforce it, but police can enforce it, but they have to see it before they can enforce it.
Right. We'll take a look at it.
Well, let's, let's table this until the next work session, we'll have time to look at what devices could be more suitable for this. Next we want to discuss, at Jackson County Park, a pavilion for the campground for the camper. Mr. Benble, I believe you.
Yeah, this is something I think we have discussed previously, and we didn't do, I think, in part because the area we're going to put it in was some field lines, six inch field line.
Yeah, and we had discussed about moving that one from the cabins over to there, and I think people from cabins like using it to know they'll come and maybe have something there, you know, but, so we just left it there at the cabins, so, yeah.
I think it's something that would benefit the campers over there, since the gravity wave and all, you know, it's knocked down most of our shade trees over there, really have a place to get together and enjoy the outdoors over there without being out the sun in the summertime.
Well, they have a bean toss tournament somewhere, and if it's raining, then you can have, you know, and, and, you know, there won't be kind of something where they can still enjoy it if it's raining or, you know, if the use bad or, you know, it's just wet.
Being out of the bright sun, too.
Yeah, and, and they, they do it in the daytime, too, so.
Is this the only bid we've got?
It's a common area where everybody in the campground can, can enjoy it, you know, can enjoy, enjoying it.
Right.
I say, is this the only bid we've got? I'm just not too, too happy, we're just giving up single bid.
Metal, yeah, but metal come up, I can get you some more bid, but metal has, first of the month, it's going to go again.
Mm-hmm. So we're talking about a 30 by 40 by 10?
Yeah. We have to put a gravel bottom in it because, as Mr. Benble stated, they are field lines out there there. Well, I, I can get you another one, but I, I don't, you know, it could be closing, it could be more.
I'll have to get some more bids, I think we have to done by next Monday or the day before, next Monday.
Do that, I mean, it just makes it more presentable, to get more than one bid.
Okay, if there's no objection, it replaces on the agenda for the next commission meeting with an additional bid to make a decision at that time. Next we'll discuss at the Jackson County Park, the grass situation around the cabins. And Mr. Seuss, can I tell you about the telephone.
Yeah, I went over there and looked at that, and Carl and Carl sitting in, I feel like they kind of neglected us as far as getting a stand of grass. I mean, if you combine it all together, well, Carl, we got a third of a stand probably, got a lot of erosion problems, and I feel like it's going to be necessary to maybe write a letter, because this is fixing to end, the way I read the contract, is that correct?
Yeah, and, and the contract it states, and I think I think all y'all copied it, but it's, it's hard to read. It states you're supposed to have a mature stand of grass on all slopes. What slopes mean, I don't know, if it's a slope like that or a slope like this, or, you know, slope's a gray area.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It wasn't prepared right to start with, I mean, because it's hard to get your grass come up on, you know, if you don't have any topsoil, and it was very little topsoil, topsoil there. And I think we need to write a letter, and it needs to be turf type fescue, in my opinion. Because Kentucky 31, just, I mean, this picks to come springtime, turn off hot, and it will not grow with a turf type fescue. I mean, whatever y'all think, but I feel like, we've got those cabins right there, we need to have some grass out there to protect them. But like I said, with old Carl, like mud been carried in, it's just unnecessary, the way it was prepared. Carl, when did that go out? 21st?
July.
When did, when did that contract went out? Was it the 21st of this month?
I think it's the end of this month. I think they gave us the papers too, that we can, what's that paper you get that you can go ahead and move in?
You're just going.
Yeah. I think we got that around the end of April 1st or May.
I know it had on there, the email you sent, but, but I feel like it's been necessary to still get and put a little pressure on to get something done with this.
So what you're proposing is that we form a letter from our attorney to the, the people that were contractors over there?
I agree.
Can we do that without people going to a motion? Can we just suggest that?
Yeah, that's it, so it's not, it's just a letter, it's not, like, some big move.
Carl, can you get her just kind of word it how you think it needs to be?
He's trying to involve.
Put on a turf type fescue.
It's hard to read.
Next, we want to discuss the Jackson County Council on Aging Roads and Regulations for Appropriate Behavior. This is an updated version that has been used for years, that is a suggestion by Tarkaw. Ms. Lynn Thurman is here, if she'd like to expand on that a little more.
Well, it's exactly like, like you said, it is something that we have had in place for several years. We had just updated ours, I want to say three or four years ago, but Tarkaw has come in now, and they want to standardize it among the five counties to all the centers so that they will know what's going on and will know what type of liability that they will hold. And I just wanted to bring this up here to you all so that you could see if there was anything on here that would not be something that you go along with. I don't, I don't know if you've had time to read it or not.
Well, in my opinion, this is a suggestion by Tarkaw just to standardize it, and basically, I've had time to look it over, and I say nothing wrong with it, it's been my suggestion to move forward with it. Is there any more discussion from the commission?
I'll agree with what you just said, it's pretty plain and simple, they need to abide with the rules as well.
If there's no objection, I'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. Next we'd like to discuss at the Solid Waste, the hiring of a temporary office clerk. And Mr. Robinson's here.
Yes, Mr. Johnson. We've made a lot of changes out of the Solid Waste Department last year or so, and created a lot more office paperwork and stuff that we really need to get caught up on. And my intentions for hiring a temporary would be to allow one of them to, to go back in the office where they want to be answering the phone and talking with the customers, and they can constant, kind of concentrate and allow us to get a little bit more work done that we really need to get caught up on. Also, with that in your package, you'll see also the job description that would be for them, and talking with Michelle, we probably would need to approve this job description too, to go along with that temporary position.
You have a time of six months, did you say, or a year?
Six months, six months, yes, sir. I put it in there on the, on the last sheet for the request.
I don't have no issue with that, I mean, it's just something that's, that's going to help you move along and get things back in order a little quicker, I guess, with all the things that's been happening lately.
If you're spending your time down there at all, the two girls out front, they're constantly, the phones ringing, or there's somebody standing at the counter, you know, someone leaving or whatever, so I believe it would be a benefit to get somebody working on some of this other stuff.
And with her working along with Jim and Randy, she'd be learning a lot about the enforcement part that we can carry on for future, too, so it'd be a big plus.
So it's Michelle's recommendation that we create this job?
Well, this, we actually reworked up the, the office clerk, updated it, and with that, it would be best to go ahead if y'all could approve this, and when we approve the temporary possible. And then that way, from future reference, we've already got this job description written up.
Well, with that, at the next, if there's no objection, I'll place this on the agenda to create this job description. And then after that has been done, I would suggest that we then move forward with hiring that, in that position, at the next commission meeting. Is that satisfactory to the commission? Next we want to discuss advertising for personnel board appointments. Personnel board has had some people that have designed and have, their appointment has run out. And we want to see if it's good with the commission that we advertise to get these slots filled.
Could I interject some two cents?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Born, I've looked at this, and you can certainly advertise if you want to, but it's not a public board, so you're not required to advertise for it, you can simply fill those, but there's no harm in advertising for it, but that's just.
I would agree to other boards, anybody that's interested in it, submit a letter to the commission, you know, saying that they're interested in it.
Okay. Do you want to, like, advertise in newspapers, such as this lot?
Yeah, I would do it in other boards.
Right, okay. So this is something that we don't really have to vote on, so we can just move forward and we'll just get advertised according to try to get these positions filled.
How many positions are we talking?
We need four.
And this board is a very essential board, because if you don't have this board and enough members to operate the board, you open yourself up to due process claims, and definitely don't want any due process claims, so.
So if somebody, if we get some applications this week, we can vote on them Monday. So we'll just try to, we'll, how long do we want to advertise this? Considering.
Close it Monday at lunch, or? It'd be fine with me, I'd just like to open it up, instead of just picking people.
Can we do that, though, where we can have that, once we have these names, we can have a work session in between and do it the following Monday meeting? Would that be a problem?
If you go up to a work session, it'll be two weeks from today, and then we have to vote on three weeks.
I like to do that up there, where we just have a little more time to see who we get in. How many days are we going to do it? Are we going to do it next Monday?
Well, that's the next time, that's the next time we can vote.
What did you say the cutoff date was, man?
We want to get it done Monday, in order to get the board filled, we would need to close the advertisement Friday or Monday or something in order to, you know, have the advertisement in place.
These people, these people have to be voting on the board?
Yes, you would have to, the board would have to vote on, but it's more of an internal board than a public board, so.
Right, right.
And I think there's ways to, I don't know, notify people that necessarily advertising it, but like I said, that's.
And I'm sure there's some people out there, there's one, this fellow, his name is falling off the board, that we'd like to come back on, but we just haven't received a letter stating that.
Well, I mean, if y'all don't want to advertise it, if we need four positions, the East Commission wants to appoint somebody, that's fine, too, I mean, however, on the handle, I just, we'd like to give people opportunity that wants to serve, an opportunity to, you know, to be consistent.
That would be a good way to do it, if everybody knew it, and we could just get it, get it where it needs to be. What about you other guys, what do y'all think?
So you're talking about advertising?
Advertising, or just equalizing, appoint somebody, make contacts within your district? You don't have to be by district, just appoint some, just ask somebody if they'd like to serve on it and, and give a resume. Or would you like to move forward with advertising?
I think with advertising, it's kind of like Jason's, it kind of opens it up to the people, and they won't say, hey, you just take your certain picks.
Okay.
I mean, I, I agree with what you said.
I don't believe we're going to have people knocking doors down the middle.
I don't think so either, no.
We may, we may not get four.
Not this board.
But they don't meet, I mean, the only time they convene is when.
When there's agreements in due process.
And you don't want to leave the board essentially somewhat inoperable for a long period of time.
So why don't we say that we'll, we'll take applications for this up till noon Monday? And we'll, we'll just advertise to these people that are digging out of boards and put it on our Facebook page and website.
Can we close at noon Friday? And then if we don't have four applicants, then everybody will have the weekend trying to roust somebody up.
If I can comment, you're going to have to get it in real quick if you want it in newspaper advertising.
Yeah, that's true.
Like, real quick.
That's why I told you on Monday.
Well, I should, I said something, but later on.
I don't think we're going to have 100 to go through, pick four with.
Yeah, I think it's more like you're going to beg a few people.
Figure out somebody.
And if you know anybody, ask them to, you know, send in a letter, ask them to be on.
I mean, if y'all want to go the other route, I mean, but I just.
We can have it on Monday. We can have agreements or something. We can have right away.
Have to lay that.
Okay, we'll go forward with that tomorrow, start advertising for that tomorrow. Next we have a board with staff. Carl, you have anything else today? Lynn?
Yeah.
Jonathan?
Yes, sir. Chairman and Commissioners, I've just sent out a photo, and that's, I wanted to take a second to explain that photo. Basically, this is going to be some things you guys have already heard, but I want to communicate kind of where we're at. This is the patching board, that's, that's what the photo is. And so I just wanted to take a minute and explain how the patching is organized and our procedure and going about it. But the reason I want to communicate this to you is I know that with your constituents, this is a front and center issue right now, particularly after the winter we've had and the persistent wet weather. It's an issue for us, I know it's, I know it's an issue for you guys, so I want to tell you a little bit about how we do it, and we've talked about this some in the past, but I want to be, I want to be clear about where we are and how we're moving forward, and I want you to, to understand that and be able to answer those questions should you be approached. Also, as we go through this, if there is a way that we need to proceed differently, or if there's a way we need to operate differently, if we need to get our heads together and think about a different way to approach this, please know that we're all here, so. You'll notice on the, on the photo that the board is organized geographically, that's, that's one of the main divisions. And then also, all the road numbers that fall in that geographic region are color coded. And so the, the point in this is that we know in one area, the roads that need to be done, and we can tell, this allows the supervisors and the crew members to try to get a lot of information into glance, so they can look very quickly and tell workload, they can look what area is the worst, they can tell pretty much chronologically who's been waiting the longest. So crews are split, there's three crews, sometimes four, depending on inmate participation and what schedule permits with them, that are spread out throughout the county and the different areas. And it goes pretty much in chronological order, but there, there are some considerations given to various things. One is higher traffic road rates, so supervisor knows by looking at the area which roads have the most cars, which roads have lesser. And so you'll also see some notations by some of the road numbers. Now, that can mean a couple of things. Perhaps you guys are receiving pressure from, from constituents and that's gotten that notation, or there's been something said in the work order process that has given a priority, so calls for accident, or there's been a claim maybe, or, you know, fill in the blank, there's, there's something there that's a safety concern and that's, that's received some higher prioritization. So having said all that, there are some pros and cons with this system, so I'll talk, I'll talk pros first. So the way this is set up, we feel like we address the work order system. And what I mean by the work order system is that road number that's written on the board indicates that there is a work order that has been completed, so we have received a citizen complaint or complaint otherwise, and it has generated a work order. Now, once that work order is generated, we have record that that problem exists in the county. So essentially, the clock starts on the time we're notified to the time we make a repair. This is, this is good and bad, I guess. It's good because we're tracking our work, we're tracking the time it takes, but I'll also do mention that we are obligated to maintain the road system in a reasonable condition, within a reasonable condition. So once these road, once these roads are on here, then we're basically given notice that it has to be repaired and we have to work diligently or within reason to make those repairs. So I mentioned the chronological organization of board, and voter class, the geographic region, and that the crews are split in the different areas. And the reason for that, the crew split, is that so various areas throughout the county can see work being performed. Now, the cons of this system is, let's just take Rosalie and say that I'm on the crew that's going to Rosalie, and I have 134, 660, 330, and I'm going to get all that done, so my supervisor has assigned County Road 58 and 670 in the Pisgah area. All right, I know I have a day's work, my supervisor knows, pretty much within reason, it's going to be all I can do to get all of my roads done that day. Well, I just drove over County Road 135 to get to 134, okay? In the condition of the county right now, there's a really good chance that 135 In the condition of the county right now, there's a really good chance that one thirty-five need to patch into, right? So, so then we receive calls, and most likely you guys received calls, and they go something like this. They were just out here, and they patched one thirty-four and drove right by one thirty-five and left it. So I, you know, I hope you can see the cons to this way of proceeding. But given the circumstances and given the situation that we're in, we feel like, you know, this is, this is our best organized way of handling. But, you know, situations exist out there where we're passing over roads perhaps that need work, and we are, you know, working on our priorities. Now, having said that, when we're not in a backlog, backlog such as this, you know, there's a hundred roads on this board room. When that backlog does not exist, then we switch to what we call preventive maintenance technique. So we take the crews and we move into an area, and we start working road after road after road after road until we can work that area. So there may be a few roads on the board, but we feel like we can justify that we're being reasonable in the time we take because of the multiple crews are being able to stay in an area and do a broader sweep of getting on the road. So I just, I just want to share that with you because I know you're getting a lot of calls right now about patching. We're getting a lot of calls right now about patching, it's every day, you know. And until the formula changes on what we're paving versus what needs it, this is likely something that's kind of worse than we're going to do it, okay? So these things I know can take its toll on you guys, it takes its toll on our employees. You know, when you have, when you have somebody that's in charge of filing, they're in charge of financial tracking, they're in charge of work orders, and the phone rings constantly for people upset about the roads and potholes, it takes its toll on those people. And when the crews go out to patch roads, and they go out and work all day, and they come back in and they've got four roads done and seven went on the board, it's not a really good sense of accomplishment if these folks get to take home at the end of the day, okay? So I know the calls, I know you get the calls, and you get constituents upset about the conditions, and our folks deal with it, too. But I just want, I just want to communicate this to everyone and let you know that this is, this is the way we're doing it. So if we need to do something different, or if anyone has any ideas, we're open to it.
As far as time, how far is the backlog going down, what's the oldest road down here, two months, three months?
Well, there's, there're January roads, you know, on here. So if we were to take, if we were to take the crews and start and mass it on, you know, we're looking at probably four months till they get all at Langston. So, you know, that's why we, that's why we're spreading them out. It'll most likely be, if, if things would normalize right now, we're looking at July, mid-July before we could catch up.
Their backlog is growing from what it was last year, growing, I mean, last year I was thinking we were six, eight weeks backlog at about this time.
It's every year it's bad, the spring is the worst. I don't know exactly how many roads at this time last year we had, but it's, it's not getting any better because, you know, there was, it's not that many years ago that we were paving a hundred mile road a summer. So we're getting further and further away from that. So all of those roads that are out there, that paved surface is aging, you know, it's cracking, it's letting water in. And so when you have a harsh winter, a wet spring, you know, it's, it's just a, it's just a bad deal.
Either way, the conditions of the roads are only going to get worse, this time next year it'll probably be more bad.
Yes, sir. I really appreciate, and please thank them a lot, to have the sheriff's department on allowing the participation of the inmates. You know, we don't necessarily gain, we don't necessarily gain a whole independent crew with that, but what it allows us to do is spread our guys thinner, fill in with inmates, and increase our crew, so. It's really helped, we've even picked up good employees that started out as inmate labor and are now, you know, we have one now that's a tent lease, doing a great job, so. You know, that's been, that's been very helpful, and this commission was, was essential in making that happen, so I appreciate all that.
Okay, guys, we appreciate them.
Absolutely.
It's not something, you go do four roads and then seven more on the board, it's hard to go home and do that about a day's work, you guys. But tell them we appreciate them, and we definitely see the work that they're doing out there.
Thank you. As far as this goes, I think it's outstanding work, myself. I mean, it, it can get away from you, I see how easy to get away from you, as many roads hadn't been worked on. I think this is good. You have any thoughts, Mr. Venable?
No, sir, thank you.
Dar, you have any thoughts?
I would like to mention that we had a hiccup in our postal system this month, our quarterly billing would have went out the first of the month. And they did send it to the postal in Atlanta, they received it on the fourth, but nobody has received their bills yet. So today being the sixteenth, we called Arista and discussed it with them, they got ahold of the post office, made a decision to go ahead and rebuild again. So if, the ones that hadn't got their bills should be getting them within the next couple of days, could be getting two bills, but if so, just disregard one and pay the one, because we didn't know, I mean, they could have sent them to Alaska, they could have went anywhere it could be. They'll eventually come back, but we don't know when.
I'll tell the office crew tomorrow that they still have complaints about the double billing and so on, so they may be aware of it. We do get calls here, just like y'all, they want stuff like that, eh?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Mann, you have anything?
No, sir.
Ms. Curry, you have anything?
Do not.
This completes everything on today's agenda, so with that, all that, and then a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion.
You got a motion, you got a second?
Yes, sir, yes.
You got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no.